Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. I will stand for the pledge to the flag and have a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We remain standing for a moment of silence for Mr. John Stendel, clerk of the works for many years who passed away on December 16th, 2020. Thank you. All right. I don't see Kevin. Is Kevin on?
Mr. Sage, Kevin's on. He just doesn't have his video on because he's driving in the car.
That is preferable. Thank you, Dr. Valley, for that. All right. Onto 4.0 presentations. Dr. Kufel in enrollment projections.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Sage. Give me a moment here. I'll share my screen. All right. Just making sure. Can everybody see that? Okay. All right. Good evening. So about this time of the year, we discuss enrollment projections. So I want to get into that a little bit, but before I do, I want to take a moment to discuss a little bit of the history, the background, the context. I would like to thank our district registrar Debbie Masha for her role in the process and for gathering the census data, helping out with the projections and being there, working side by side. Very, very much appreciated. This has been the 55th consecutive year of the census data. I will say that, you know, as a district, many districts do this about every two years, some less frequently, and we've done this for 55 consecutive years running. And quite frankly, it has really proven to be invaluable to help with our enrollment projections to best serve the community in regards to programming and making decisions. We've used census cards as opposed to census workers for the last four years, which once again was probably a valuable thing this past summer with the COVID-19 pandemic. We will talk most of our time around projections from the census data as it pertains to overall enrollment. We'll talk a little bit about the impact of COVID-19 on our numbers and then review some additional highlights. I am going to try to... Something's with my monitor there. Something's cut off. Give me one moment. Share this one. Doesn't wanna. That's okay. We will adjust. So the projected versus the official beginning enrollment, OBE, you're going to see that several times throughout this screen. It's cutting off to 2016 numbers, but that's okay. This year I've provided it in a table just to help with really the presentation of the numbers, but also to get a better view of the longitudinal impact of the numbers over the course of several years. So if I go through, for example, 2017, which you can see at the bottom of the screen, you'll see in 2017, the projected numbers were 5,634. 2017, the official beginning enrollment, OBE, was 5,614. Difference of about 20 students, fewer showed up. You'll see the highlighted this current year. So last year, when I stood up at the board meeting, we were looking at 5,577 to be projected. And in terms of the official beginning enrollment, the number of students who actually showed up in the fall, 5,414. So you'll see that's a decent difference from projected to OBE, which there's always a difference, but usually the difference is really less than 1%, even the other years. And this year is about 3%. So that's something to keep in mind as we go forward. I know we've talked about that before. This slide looks at official beginning enrollment to official beginning enrollment. So from one year to the next. So what you'll see is if we choose any of the years, we'll choose the one that we're currently in. From 2019, so last fall, two falls ago, I suppose, we had 5,600 students who actually were enrolled in Lancaster schools. This current fall, 5,414 students. So from one year to the next, the official beginning enrollment decreased by 186. So you'll notice from 2014 up through present day, we've had a slow decline of the K-12 population as a whole, which is not out of the norm, but obviously this year we had a pretty significant drop in enrollment compared to previous years. Going back, the current graduating class, 481 students in this senior class, they began as a cohort of 439. So it's interesting, and each year we'll display that because it's interesting to see how the graduating class does grow from kindergarten through 12th grade. This is certainly common as we are a destination district, but that's something to keep in mind as we look through some of this data here going forward in the next few slides. So talked a little bit about seniors. Sorry, I think I failed. Now in terms of kindergarten. So once again, kindergarten, as we discussed most years, is the most difficult to predict as it has the most variability. Why? Well, mostly because these students are not with us yet. And there's a lot of different factors that determine projected versus official beginning enrollment. So once again, what you'll see, year to within the year, projected versus the official beginning enrollment. So typically, we're pretty close between the projected and the official beginning. This past year or this current year, we projected 406 kindergarten students and 351 students are currently or were currently enrolled as of the fall official beginning enrollment date. So that was a difference of 55 students, a decrease. Now, you know, one thing to keep in mind as we are projecting 359 students for this upcoming kindergarten group, we will certainly have a much clearer picture in the next coming months. March, which is hard to believe, is next month starts our kindergarten registration. May and June, we'll continue with kindergarten screening. And then the summer with the additional movement and things of that nature, we really have a better grasp in terms of the students who will be joining us as kindergarteners next school year. Homeschooled students. So this is an interesting slide that usually homeschool students makes a bullet, if at all, of the presentation much later on. But this year, we thought it was worth putting it a little bit closer to the front of the presentation. What you'll see are the number of homeschool students that we have, and it has drastically increased, close to 90% increase from last year to this year. So currently, we have 134 students who are receiving their education via homeschool. That means that they're working with their parents exclusively outside of what we have currently in terms of the instructional models with 81 families. Last year, there was a pretty significant increase because in a typical year, we have about 50 students, 49, 47, 54, 56 students who are homeschooled K through 12. This year, we're at 134. A little bit further breakdown, which I believe is in the packet. Kindergarten alone, we had 18 students who are being homeschooled. First grade, we have 12. Second grade, we have 13. Third grade, we have nine. So once again, that's quite a bit of a change from years past and wanted to make sure we highlighted that earlier on. So the number of students projected for September 2020 was 163 more than the official beginning enrollment. So as we talk about the impact of COVID-19 on enrollment projections and actual enrollment, if you remember back to this slide here, which was the opening table with 163 less than the projected. I'll go back. That can be attributed to a few factors. One I just showed you was the homeschool increase of students of 63. In district parochial students, especially at the K-3 level, increased by 29 students. Out of district public and charter that we saw an increase of 10. And then kindergarten, there's 55 less than projected. If you recall, projected, we have 406 students and official beginning enrollment is 351. What we understand to have happened with some of our families was that instead of sending them to kindergarten this year, many families did hold them back and are planning on sending them to kindergarten this upcoming year. Another way to look at the data, right here, we have official beginning enrollment versus then the projected for next year. Okay, the official beginning enrollment kindergarten, we've talked about a little bit. They're currently at 351. And you see what projected, they're projected to be up a little bit to 359. These projections, by the way, do take into account our students who are homeschooled. They are part of the formula that we use. Grades one through three, you'll see a slight increase of 11. William Street, you're looking at an increase of about 40-some students. Middle school, fairly unchanged, about down about six students. And the high school is hovering around 1,700 students for the first time in certainly many years. K through 12, the projection is cut off there. My apologies. Official beginning enrollment is 5,414, and we're projected to be at 5,409, a difference of five from where we currently started the year. And then lastly, students in preschool, which through the census process, we've defined as birth through school age. What you'll see here is 2017, 16 to 17, there was an increase of 58. Our current year and ever since then, there's been a decrease of birth through school age. This past year was a decrease of 87 students from one year to the next. That's just the trend that we've been seeing here for several years. So in all, that kind of concludes the enrollment projections. Going forward, as always, we will continue to monitor the data, especially as it pertains to enrollment, work with our buildings to help us throughout this process as they begin their registration process for our kindergarten students and the screening process and continue to make sure that we're making decisions that are best for the Lancaster Central School District. I do want to thank the board and certainly the opportunity to thank our teachers and faculty and staff for the continued hard work that they have put into transitioning to the second semester. Overall, very smooth, but I do want to thank everybody for their hard work. At this point, are there any questions or comments?
I have some comments. Just looking at it overall. You know, I think it's important to mention, you know, like there's a lot of unknowns, just like every other aspect of this year that we've had. How many of those kindergarteners that were kept home will come this year? How many of those kindergarteners that are coming in as five-year-olds this year will choose to hold? You know, how many parents would choose to hold them back? Will those two balance out? Or will, as that cohort progresses to first grade to second grade to third grade, will there be, you know, a glut, excuse me, fewer students in that particular cohort? And will the, you know, class sizes and faculty and those kind of things like we do every single year have to be adjusted? You know, we don't know. We don't know those kind of things. How many of the in-district parochial students, you know, approximately 29 to 55 of them that chose to go there because maybe they could get five days a week or those particular choices? How many of those will come back? Out of district public or charter school, while there are only 10, how many of those will come back? And kindergarten, you know, that's a huge one. But, you know, I think that, again, this is a year, it's an anomaly. And so we'll have to watch this and it connects with, you know, the SES study and so many things that we've been discussing over the last couple of years with regard to that. This is more finite data. It's not the three tiers of the SES study, the high, middle, and low that the board is well aware of and has looked at. But I mean, I think those are important things to talk about, discuss, and to think about as the time comes on. Again, we're only in February. We'll go to kindergarten registration like we always do. And this data will get better and better and better as we move forward with younger children. But the other numbers will also, but we do have some interesting things happening this year in this area as well. I don't know if anyone else has any comments or thoughts.
Andy, really good job. This is so unknown, right? So I'm assuming the assumptions are maintain the current flight path and we don't really have any answers around COVID, around sort of what the model looks like. So it feels like do what we're doing here and then as we get more information, react to that. Because I would think and I would hope that those numbers, you'd see them change a little bit given that because two of those line items were essentially COVID-related. Where we look at the kindergarteners, it makes perfect sense when you look at, you know, the pop in homeschooling. And even some of the other schools and that flow off, we've seen, and I think some of us have experienced that. So, you know, just hang tight with it. Really, it's a really good way to look at it. I think we're getting smarter here very fast as a group and as your teams are grabbing this data and sharing it. So this was helpful to see that. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kufel. Thank you, Dr. Valley. Onto 5.0 correspondence. Nothing listed. Anyone else? Any of board members get any correspondence that they need to let us know about? All right. 6.0 approval of minutes. 6.1, do I have a motion to approve the regular session minutes from January 11th, 2021? So moved. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 6.2, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the budget work session from January 25th, 2021?
So moved.
Again.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Onto 7.0 items from staff organizations. Do we have anybody from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association? All right, hearing none. Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Good evening. Nothing to report. How's everyone doing?
That's it. Awesome. Good. Thank you, Mr. Abraham. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? All right, onto 8.0 board reports. Do any of the board members have any reports? All right. Just quickly, I know we're getting back into the sports seasons. Hopefully, we will have many opportunities to watch on the live streaming. Make sure you check out the live streaming on the internet homepage. Also, make sure you're looking out for any other activities, specifically, you know, the music, anything in the arts. Check out Twitter. Make sure you're following all the amazing things that the students are still doing in the safest way possible. Onto 9.0 superintendent's administrative report. Dr. Valley?
Yeah, I have three things. I just wanted to talk quickly about our survey on climate, school climate and wellness. There was a robo-call that went out, code ed call this afternoon, but we continue to support the Lancaster community and students, parents, faculty and staff to the best of our ability from an academic standpoint. But also, we're always trying to do our best to support them from a social, emotional standpoint as well. Maintaining our longstanding partnership with the University of Buffalo at Alberti Center, we're administering a survey to our students, grades four through 12, teachers and families to inform our district and our school-wide initiatives to continue to promote student and staff wellness. The purpose of the survey is to better understand the social, emotional needs of our students and to obtain student, teacher, and parent perspectives on our school climate, our school engagement, and of course, the stressors on our children that they're feeling during this challenging and unique year. Second, I just wanted to say that, you know, talk a little bit about the transition to the second semester because last Monday was the first day of the second semester. And since October, my administrative team and everyone in the school district has been planning for and working towards a smooth transition to the second semester. The largest consideration and concern was a mass migration of students to either hybrid or remote as either one, either going from remote to hybrid or hybrid to remote could have created scheduling nightmares and scenarios. And many of those simply could not be accommodated by any school district, let alone ours. You know, especially given, you know, Governor Cuomo's and New York State Department of Health's six feet and mask mandate, which is still in effect. So just imagine if 350 remote students wanted to go hybrid and we had no physical space, classroom space. And we had to say no to those parents and those students who wanted to return, for example. And that was just a hypothetical. Created meal, created, you know, some, you know, increased stomach acid those last three weeks. But the information we've provided the community, I think, the video presentations, the timelines, the frequently asked question documents that we created helped avoid that situation, I think, and hope. In the end, we had about 300 students total who switched learning models, both ways, that is, hybrid to remote and remote to hybrid. And the buildings were able to accommodate all families and students requesting a learning model switch. And that's no small task, trust me. Thank you to Andy Kufel and Karen Marchioli and Andy Craseman and Michelle Ziegler and John Armstrong and Sandy Camerata. Each and every one of the building-level administrators, all the seven through 12 counselors and everyone else that's involved in this difficult and time-consuming scheduling effort that's really never been done before. Because we do this at one time in the beginning of the school year for a traditional schedule. We've never done it twice with hybrid learning models and remote, et cetera. This is not easy. So thank you to all of them. Your work is appreciated. And third, you know, athletics and music, I want to make a comment about that because following the governor's announcement on Friday, January 22nd, NISPA, which is the state athletic association, released their updated return to interscholastics resource document. And they did that on Monday, January 25th, which was our last board meeting. And in this guidance, that guidance was eventually approved by the Erie County Department of Health. So I've met with Brian Wild and Caesar Marchioli and Stephanie Lackey and Mike Binyarsky. Each and every time, this guidance has been changed and it's been changed literally dozens of times since July. But again, here in January and February, we've met multiple times to ensure that, one, we could ultimately pull this off. And number two, to operationalize the many, many, many changes with regards to facility, locker rooms, team schedules, academic eligibility issues, all that kind of stuff. And the three, the work through the cleaning and safety protocols that needed to be followed to ensure safety to the best of our ability for all these teams and all these music groups and clubs and all those kind of things. These teams were approved to begin on Monday, February 1st. We decided to keep it tight and start small with regard to the timing of practices and like that and things like that, so we could see if we could be successful and what were our strengths and our liabilities. Were they individuals? Were they individual teams? Was it individual sports or music events or clubs or those kind of things? And then we can open up and do some things and improve as we move along. So around Western New York and in other school districts, not ours necessarily, these changes around sports sort of set off the musics and art community who felt that they weren't being treated equally. But I'm proud to say that here in Lancaster Central School District, this wasn't the case. Thanks in large part to the Board of Education, who has since day one, supported me and our music programs in ways commensurate with athletics since September, late September, early October. Lancaster's music department, led by Dan DeAngelis, continues to trend set in terms of their performances, virtual and collaborations with organizations all over Lancaster and Western New York. They're doing virtual presentations and live streaming concerts and new and innovative ways. So I wanted to take a time and, you know, shout out to Dan and our whole music department and all our music teachers and all our music advisors in this school district as well. As a huge thank you to all involved, let's keep rolling and we're going to continue tweaking these things and providing our students with the best opportunities that we possibly can moving on forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valley. All right, moving on to 10.0 old business. Does anybody have any old business to discuss? All right, 11.0 new business, 11.1 personnel items, 11.1.1. Can I have a motion on the appointment of senior microcomputer technical support specialist?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right. Before...
Mr. Sage, I think Michelle Ziegler had some things to say.
Yeah, before we, before we will, we'll have Michelle Ziegler say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Sage. I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce Eric Miller, who will be taking over the role of senior microcomputer technical support specialist. That's a mouthful. I agree, Mr. Sage, on March 1st. Eric will be assuming the duties of Patricia Bruce, who is here on the call with us tonight and will be retiring at the end of the month. So we certainly want to wish Pat the best in her retirement. Eric has been a member of the Information Services Department since 2013, assisting in the design, maintenance, and support of our district's computer infrastructure. Eric also held a similar role as a member of the United States Marine Corps. Eric was selected from a pool of talented candidates because of his goal-oriented plans and his solutions to accomplish these goals. In order to achieve these, Eric's technology vision supports students not having to learn the system, but rather let the system support the learning in the classroom. Thank you for joining me in welcoming Eric Miller to our administrative team.
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself. I've lived in Lancaster for over 20 years. And as you all mentioned, the last seven years, I've worked in the district. I have over 25 years' experience in the information technology field. And I'd just like to say I'm excited to continue my service to our district in this new position and to contribute to the goals that our administrators, faculty, and staff strive to achieve for our teachers and students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you for your service to this country. Any comments or questions from the board? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone against? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Miller.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, 11.1.2 personnel changes. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel changes?
So moved.
Okay.
Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Hi. Anyone against? Motion carries. On to eleven point two education items, eleven point two point one, do I have a motion to approve the committee on special education?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? I.
I.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Eleven point two point two, do I have a motion for the committee on preschool special education?
So moved. Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? I. Anyone against? Motion carries. Twelve point O, business and financial items, twelve point one, do I have a motion to approve the financial items?
So moved.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
I.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Twelve point two, possibly that fifty-six seventy for records management, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Hi. Anyone against? Motion carries. Uh, this is a policy, twelve point three is a policy first reading. Uh, this is for forty-two eleven, uh, organization chart. Twelve point four, BOSI's call for nominations, uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, we do have one comment here, um, looks like two incumbents are running, uh, Mr. Kevin and Mrs. Wilson. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of nominating Mr. Kevin and Mrs. Wilson?
I.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Twelve point five, do I have a motion to approve the food service operating reports for December?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Uh, twelve point six, uh, do I have a motion to approve the surplus equipment?
So moved. Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? I. Anyone against? Motion carries. Twelve point seven, construction change orders, do I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Hi. Anyone against? Motion carries. Um, without objection, we'll lump in, uh, the A one A contracts, the AI A I contracts. Uh, twelve point eight, twelve point nine, twelve, ten through twelve, thirteen. Uh, IBC Engineering PC, Professional Services Industries, Inc., Ciena Environmental Technologies. UNS Services, Kenny Geo Technical Engineering Services, P L L C. Young and Right Architectural, do I have a motion to approve those AI contracts?
So moved.
I can.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
I.
Anyone against? Motion's carry. Twelve point fourteen, girls hockey agreement, do I have a motion to approve the girls hockey agreement?
So moved. I can.
Any comments or questions? All right, uh, just quickly, this is, um, you know, we have a great partnership with Iroquois and Depew, uh, so that, uh, the ladies from each of our school districts can participate on that team. Uh, all those in favor? Hi. Anyone against? Motion carries. And twelve point fifteen, uh, do I have a motion to approve the various providers of special education?
So moved.
Okay.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Hi. Anyone against? Motion carries. Thirteen point O, public hearing, uh, we do not have anybody signed up, uh, to speak tonight. Fourteen point O is an exec- an executive session to discuss matters related to employment of a particular person or persons. So that effectively ends the meeting tonight, um, but we do have a budget work session, uh, scheduled for February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one at six thirty PM. Uh, and the next regular session, uh, is March eighth, two thousand twenty-one at seven PM. Um, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Oh. Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
I.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Thank you all for joining, uh, again, Mr. Miller, thank you and congratulations. Have a great night, everyone.